Agenda item one: The election of mayor. I call for nominations for the election of mayor for the council year 2015/16.
Madam Mayor, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to propose councillor Michael Henry-Hewell-Band, here and after referred to as Mike Band, to be mayor of the borough for the ensuing local government year 2015/16. And I have a seconder. Mike is an engineer by profession, involved in the power industry, and in particular, power stations. His first job in view involved the nuclear power station at Hinkley Point A, which is a long time ago. He had a series of senior positions with the UK Babcock Group and was particularly involved in overseas operations and travelled extensively to Mexico, South Africa, Zimbabwe, Japan and India, and indeed ended up in charge of all operations in India. These jobs needed diplomacy big time, and as Mike also had financial acumen, he found himself doing commercial internal auditing for the company. Mike retired from the company in 2001 with some consultancy. Mike, with his wife Val and the family, have been residents of Shamley Green since 1974, and after his retirement was put under great pressure by the great and good of Shamley Green to represent the village on this council. And he was duly elected in 2003 and has represented his fiefdom of Shamley Green on the council ever since. With his business and financial background, he found himself shadowing the financial portfolio from 2005 and then after the 2007 election, he served on the executive with the finance portfolio until 2014, when he became the deputy mayor. During those seven years on the executive, he turned around the council's finances, so that now some £8.5 million per annum has been saved on expenditure, and he used his diplomatic and financial skills in the Star Chamber process that he initiated. This is not a torture process, I understand, but instead a series of chats with heads of service at the beginning of the budget cycle, when at the end the heads of service discover that they've agreed some cost-saving measures. All very painless, he tells me. Mike ensured that the council tax could be held at the same level for six years, despite government cuts, and ensured we were able to spend some £16 million on leisure centres over the years, as well as three-quarters of a million on grants per year to local organisations. As deputy leader from 2008 to 2014, Mike was largely involved in the restructuring of Waverley, so we now have a cohesive team of officers with good working relationships. Mike is currently vice-chairman of the board of Surrey Hills Area of Natural Beauty, has been a hard-working parish councillor since 2007, and with his wife Val has been heavily involved in the village that he represents. A warning however: if you should be driving through Shamley Green, beware of Mike wearing his high-vis jacket and a gun. It's not that they're going for independence and you're coming across the border, it's of course a speed gun, and Mike is part of the speed watch team. Val is involved on Meals on Wheels, church flowers for the local church, as well as a cathedral, and many other things now and in the past. Mike and Val have two grown-up children, a son and daughter, and four grandchildren, and I know the children are here, I say children, are here tonight. Not forgetting two black labradors and other dogs that seem to visit for sleep-overs quite often. I know that Mike has the skills and the personality to make him a great ambassador for this council, both within Waverley and further afield. His financial skills will ensure that he can eke out the very small mayor's allowance. He will be diplomatic and fair as mayor, and his energies with Val at his side will be a great asset to this council. I have no hesitation therefore in proposing councillor Mike Band as mayor of this council for the year ahead. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Goodrich. Do we have a seconder?
Yes, Madam Mayor, pleased to second. In fact, I'm delighted to be able to second councillor Goodrich's motion and thank him for his eloquent speech. He's actually not left me an awful lot to say, which is probably a good thing. But I do need to touch on the fact, talking about the Star Chamber, Mike and I had the good fortune to both be on the executive at the same time, and I have to say, he made an absolutely splendid colleague. Sometimes a bit challenging, Mike and I come from the same background, we both came from the electricity supply industry, so we knew where we're coming from. Going into Star Chamber was certainly never painless, never. Mike would scrutinise your and your officers' wish lists for the year, he'd find any loopholes in it, turf it out, and you'd come away thinking, oh, I did all right here, when in actual fact the person who did all right was Mike and the coffers, he always did really, really well. One thing that we need to remember is that we achieved a balanced budget under Mike's steady hand, I'm glad to say. And one of the things that he introduced, which I always really, really liked, were the Mike spend-to-save ideas. He believed that there was a good, or does believe, that there is a good way, element of spending money to actually save money in this council, and coming up with good projects that help the community, foster the reputation of this council, and produce really, really good value for money. And they've always seemed to have come off well and worked really well, and it's a great legacy to leave behind. But the main thing that I think I want to mention that Mike has really instigated, with a passion, was our new homes programme. Mike has really started it off. We were always in a position where we were not able to develop our social housing, we didn't have the money, the government took all our rents away, we got nothing to invest in our own housing stock. After a lot of government lobbying, this of course was changed, and delighted to say that we were in a much, much better financial position, and now are, at last, building houses in Waverley for our residents. And this is all, the driver and the driving force behind the whole of this project was Mike Band, who cared about the tenants and the residents in this borough with a passion that they need decent and affordable housing. So that's a really, really good legacy to leave behind. I know Mike will make an absolutely first-class mayor, and I know that Val will very, very well support him. And I know she's been shopping in my favourite dress shop because she has nothing much left there now, she's nicked most of the things. But I'm sure that they will both have an absolutely wonderful year. I hope you all members will endorse the recommendation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor King. Are there any other nominations? In that case, is that agreed?
Agreed.
It therefore gives me immense pleasure to declare councillor Mike Band as the new mayor of Waverley.
Please rise whilst the mayor-elect leaves the chamber. Past mayors, mayorsess and consorts, councillors and guests, there will now be a short five-minute break whilst the mayor robes. Past mayors, mayorsess and consorts, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please rise to receive the new mayor of Waverley, councillor Mike Band.
First thing I have to do is first to welcome you all, and now to read my declaration of acceptance of office. So, I, Michael Henry-Hewell-Band, having been elected to the office of mayor for the borough of Waverley, hereby declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it, according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of members of Waverley Borough Council in the performance of my functions in that office. Sign that somewhere. Please be seated. Members, distinguished guests, members in particular, I am very conscious of the honour which you have bestowed upon me to be your mayor for the coming year. And I will strive to serve both the borough and our residents of the borough, following the example of my illustrious predecessors. I must say that my immediate predecessors have set a very high bar for me to follow, so it will be a challenge. I also like to thank my proposer and my seconder. Though I'm not sure I quite recognise some of the comments made. Certainly I wield a speed gun and do beware coming through Shamley Green. And we have caught one or two notable people. The Cranley members will know that I actually caught Judy Bruis, much to her embarrassment, but there are one or two other notable sculpts, so be warned. I think the thing that I'm most proud of being doing, having been a councillor now for 12 years, is not actually doing all the things that my proposer and seconder said, but actually being part of a team which did those things. And I really have felt that we are extremely fortunate in Waverley in having such a professional team of officers to support us. And I've been proud of being part of that team. Without Paul Wenham, who's sitting on my left-hand side, who really has been up for all the changes and inputting his expertise and knowledge and commitment, none of this would have happened. So it has genuinely been since 2007 a team of officers and members together which have wrought these changes, and which I think have taken Waverley to being now one of the most well-run boroughs, not just in the South East but probably in the country as well. And I think our officers deserve a lot of the credit for achieving that. One of the things however, I think this last election brought to my attention, knocking on the door and talking to people, is just how few of them really understand all the things that Waverley actually do. And so one of the things that I want to do in my role as mayor for this coming year is to particularly focus on being the ambassador for Waverley, and really going out of my way wherever I can to make sure people do understand all the services we provide, all the things we do, all the playing fields we deal with, all the work we do and have done in our leisure centres, all the work we're doing in building the new tennis club at Brightwell's, for example. And indeed, mentioning, Carol was very kind to mention the issue of housing, what we have been able to start to do to go back into the market to actually build social housing for the first time in many years. And so I look forward to being able to be promoting those and to visit them as time goes by. And so I'm keen to work with you, my fellow councillors, and also our officers. And I've already talked to the comms team as to how we might go about this. And so once again, thank you for the confidence you've shown in me, and I'll do my best to serve you as I can. So moving on then to the rest of the evening's agenda, if we may. Robin, are there any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have received apologies from councillors Mike Hodge, Peter Ishiwood and Ross Welland.
Thank you. Are there any others we know of? Fine. Moving on then, it gives me great pleasure to call for nominations for the appointment of the deputy mayor. Councillor Munro.
Thank you very much, and I'm in the fortunate position of being the first to congratulate you, Mr Mayor, which of course I duly do, and I hope you have a terrific year. I'm also very privileged and pleased to be asked to nominate councillor Chris Storey to be your deputy mayor and deputy mayor of this council. Chris tells me that he's a Yorkshire person at heart, but actually escaped from Yorkshire, voluntary or involuntary, he doesn't say, over nearly 30 years ago, and is now a Farnham person and a Waverley person. Virtually not quite born, but very nearly bred, and he's been around for a very long time. And he's truly got deep roots in the local community. He also tells me that his professional life has been a very busy and varied one, it's quite astonishing, involving in packaging, and also managing director of a hologram firm. I think that is the real Chris that is sitting there, but he may surprise us. I wonder how often that joke's been made. I'm sure it will be made again. He also tells me that he used to do a lot in London, community work in London, and starting with four friends, the Ballam and Tooting Local Advice Service, offering local people help in all sorts of areas. My immediate reaction is to say, gosh, you lucky person, Chris, you've got four friends. That's great. Can I borrow one or two of them if I ever feel lonely? If it were four enemies, now that would be no problem at all. But you're a very hospitable social chap, as we all know, and so that demonstrates that. You've been a councillor in one way or the other since 2007, starting off at Farnham Town Council, and now of course this is your second term, just starting at Waverley. And you and I and everybody here I know have worked together on a wide variety of fields. And I know of course that how conscientiously and hard you've worked for the community in Farnham, particularly, very community-minded, genial, you obviously like people, and you're extremely active in Farnham affairs. And I hope being deputy mayor will allow you to spread your wings, if Mike will allow you, that is, over the whole of Waverley. But in Farnham, you've been involved in Farnham in Bloom, music in the park, you've been helping to manage the maltings, and also, and I'm personally very grateful for this, you accepted the offer to come become a school governor of St Peter's School. So all in all, I think this is a very fitting promotion, dare I say it, for yourself, and I think it's going to be really good. But the one thing about electing a mayor and a deputy mayor is that more often than not you get two for the price of one. And in your case, I'm particularly referring of course to your wife Judith, who is, I'm glad to say, here. And I know you two will make an absolutely marvellous team to represent the borough, try and keep us in order when the mayor is otherwise engaged. And above all, I do hope you and Judith have terrific fun.
Thank you for that. I believe you have a seconder.
Yes, Mr Mayor. I am pleased to second this particular nomination. And, Mr Mayor, fellow councillors, distinguished guests and officers here assembled. I've only known Chris since 2011, which of course is the year when we first both stood as prospective Waverley councillors. Now since that time, or in this last four years, Chris has been actively committed to his councillor's role in supporting Waverley. For example, he's on the Western Planning Committee, and that has finished in him being elected as vice-chair. But during that time, he's actually chaired nine of the meetings of Southern and Western Committees during the year. So I think that helps to illustrate that he's up for things and will readily contribute. He's also a member of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Committee together with its Housing Improvement Subcommittee. And in respect of joint planning, he's a member of that committee too. And to spread his wings even further, he's a member of the Licensing and Regulatory Committee. Now councillor Munro has already mentioned a certain county, and I must bring to your notice, in a spirit of openness, the fact that he has been born on the wrong side of the Pennines. But nobody can help that, can they? But he has been quite dreadfully radicalised in his years because, do you know, he refuses to buy red roses for his wife. But, you know, whenever I've been in Chris's company, I've always found him to be what I call a good man. And that quality I rate very highly indeed, and hence I had no hesitation in offering to second his nomination, and I wholeheartedly recommend to everybody his nomination as deputy mayor. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? In that case, is that agreed?
Agreed.
I will now invest the new deputy mayor and mayoress and one or two others from the front of the dais. Thank you for all your guidance from my year as a deputy mayor. Enjoy it.
Thank you very much.
Mike, thank you very much for all the hard work you've done, not just for last year, but for all your enthusiasm. I now ask the deputy mayor to make his declaration of acceptance of office. Stand up and read.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, Christopher Storey, having been elected to the office of deputy mayor for the borough of Waverley, hereby declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it, according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of members of Waverley Borough Council in the performance of my functions in that office. Mr Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, can I also offer my congratulations to the mayor on his election? I, hearing about the Star Chamber, reminded me of my first occasion of becoming aware that there was such a person as Mike Band, when on Farnham Town Council, we were negotiating to buy the South Street premises back from Waverley, and funnily enough, our offer of one pound wasn't accepted, and I don't quite know why. I want to thank my proposer and secondor for their kind words. I do have four friends, thank you, and a few more, hopefully, some of them even in this council chamber. I am looking forward to this year, and I shall be delighted to be working with councillor Band as the mayor, and I'm honoured and privileged to serve this borough in the office of deputy mayor, and I want to thank you all for electing me.
We now come to the vote of thanks for the retiring mayor, which is going to be moved by councillor Pat Frost.
I too congratulate you, Mr Mayor, on high office. Do enjoy it, have a lot of fun, because it's great fun being mayor. Mindful of the fact that tonight is your night, I cannot let the evening pass without a tribute to our outgoing mayor. She has been an example to us all, having completed some 400 plus engagements with energy and enthusiasm, not least her recent parachute jump with the Tigers in Germany, rather you than me. Unless you've been mayor of Waverley, you really don't know how much boundless energy you must have, not least to cover the travelling from one part of the borough to another. It's not unusual to have an engagement in the morning in Cranley, another lunchtime in Farnham, then back to Hazelmeir for the evening. Liz has taken all this in her stride. She has chaired the council with dignity, grace and charm, and is always so elegant, I don't know how you do it Liz, but take note, Mike. Everyone who has met her has been won over by her charm, lovely smile, and knowledge about the organisation she is visiting. The work she has done for her charity Citizens Advice has been wonderful, even to the extent of using her town merril contacts to help, as evidenced by the concert in Charterhouse. I've discovered over the years, it's not what you know, it's who you know. Liz, you have been a wonderful mayor, championing Waverley wherever you have gone. On behalf of council, I thank you and your consort Mike for all your efforts. Thank you, Liz.
Councillor Bynum.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and my congratulations also. I'm sure you will have a wonderful year. Much has been said by Pat Frost that I would have said, but Liz, you and Mike have had a great year. The whole of Waverley Borough and your chosen charity have benefited from your hundreds of engagements, and I know that you've enjoyed events elsewhere in Surrey and beyond. You've also been a great supporter of the armed forces, and that's been recognised very strongly by the armed forces. You have both, you have both undertaken a long and arduous training programme, as deputy mayor and then mayor of Godalming, and then the same for Waverley. Four years of hard work, hard but enjoyable work. I'm a little envious of that, as I only had one year as mayor. Perhaps I'll get invited back. I'm also envious of your recent parachute jump. Unlike Pat, Mike has obviously been very, obviously been very understanding, and I am not so unfortunate, I'm not allowed to jump. Your charm and smile have wowed, wowed us all, and your wonderful outfits have been just the ticket. The party is over the moon, over the time for being, but I'm sure you'll both enjoy a little more time to yourselves. On behalf of us all, thank you for a wonderful year.
Before I ask councillors Wheatley to respond, is there anybody else who would like to speak? No, and this falls yours.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I congratulated you before, but I congratulate you again. Have a wonderful year. Dare I say, in some ways, councillor Frost has stolen some of my thunder. Mr Mayor, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen, I cannot thank you all enough for having afforded me the privilege and honour of being Waverley Borough Mayor, Waverley Borough's mayor for the last year. It has given me the opportunity to have some amazing experiences, and to meet wonderful people from all walks of life, and particularly our fantastic voluntary sector, without whom I truly believe Britain would cease to function as we know it. As I've outlined our activities at each council meeting, suffice it to say that over the last 12 months, now, I must be a little more modest than Pat, because I only make it 316, but it is, but whatever, Mike and I have carried out 316 duties. With your generous support, including the results of sponsored walks carried out by the delightful La Mardian Youth Association, approaching £10,000 has been raised for my merril charity Citizens Advice Waverley. To that end, great appreciation is due to the bands of Farnham and Hazelmeir, to Godalming Operatic Society, and particularly to Godalming Band, for their brilliant performances at both my fundraising concerts. Also, as many of you are now definitely aware, I accepted a challenge from the Tigers, the free fall parachute team of the Princess of Wales' Royal Regiment, and completed a skydive with them at their drop zone in Bad Lipspringer in Germany on the 13th of May. I felt such a crazy action required an unusual purpose, so I'm using it to highlight the need of a section of my ward, Binscombe and Godalming. The estate of Northbourne has been dreaming of a community building for about eight years, so I decided to jumpstart a fund to help them achieve this end. The idea is to allow half the building to be used as a boxing club, and at this moment, the fund stands at £2,012, but with Gift Aid, it's £2,383. I view today with very mixed emotions, as my Waverley merrility immediately followed my being town mayor of Godalming. As has already been said, I have been connected to the merrility for the last four wonderful years. Yes, it has been quite demanding at times, even decidedly daunting, but I wouldn't have missed a moment of it. Mike and I have made some lovely friends, not forgetting our brilliant chain gang across Surrey, including the High Sheriff, who have all been such fun to work with. I'm therefore very sad to be leaving the office, but, on the other hand, view it as the opportunity to be able to spend more time with the family, and even to play nana properly to my five-year-old grandson. Mike is worried about the future months, I'm not. For instance, I'm delighted and relieved to have been re-elected back onto both Waverley and Godalming councils. While mayor, I managed to carry out my usual various community commitments, but I have recently become a rotarian, as well as the chairman of the Godalming Mine Association, the friendship group of the Godalming's Twin Town in Germany. However, I'm really looking forward to being able to resume theatre visits, sports activities, plus travel, and as we both continue to look after a few bookkeeping clients, I really don't think we shall have time to be bored. Throughout the year, when circumstances dictated, I was brilliantly represented by my deputy councillor Mike Band and his wife Valerie, immediate past mayor and consort councillors Patricia and Brian Ellis, and even on occasions, former mayor and mayors councillor Tony and Mrs Cathy Gordon Smith. Many thanks to them all for carrying the flag so well on our behalf. I would also like to thank my chaplain for the year, Canon Mervyn Roberts, for his kindness and support, the two Robins and Emmas, and Paul Wenham, for their constant guidance and encouragement, and most of all, the mayor's secretary Alison Burrows, for ensuring I turned up at the right place, at the right time, and in the right apparel. However, many thanks have to go to my consort, mayors husband, Mike. It makes a huge difference when the mayor's partner enjoys the activities as much as the mayor, as it means we can each play our part in circulating and talking to people. I think it is true to say that we have been a merril team, and I'm very grateful to him for supporting me in the way he has. Sad though I am to be going, I know that Mike Band and Valerie will do a brilliant job. I wish them every success, happiness and fulfilment in what I hope will be a very special year for them. Thank you. Mr Mayor, if I may, I have just a couple of gifts, may I?
Could it be angels' wings, Liz? What do you think?
Thank you, Liz. We move now on to the next agenda item, which is the minutes of the last council meeting. Can I confirm those minutes, or do I have a speaker? Whoops, that's the minute, I think we may have a speaker. Before, with councillor Fraser, I know wishes to speak about these minutes, but just to remind new councillors, the only issue which you can really speak to on the minutes of previous meeting relates to the accuracy of those minutes, so I'd be grateful if you could confine your comments to those. Councillor Fraser.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillors, I don't wish to strike an unfortunate note on the happy proceedings this evening, and I'm sure as one of the new guys on the block, you will be generous if I transgress, just a shade, but I wish to...
Please, I would really appreciate if you stuck to the rules at this stage. If there's some more comments you wish to make, you will have the opportunity to do that in due course, but in terms of the minutes of the meeting, please would you just stick to the accuracy of the minutes if you've got some comments on those?
Indeed.
The content, I think, is not for reopening at this particular juncture.
I do not intend to reopen. Draw attention to 6114/2, where a letter from a member of the public, a very specific and detailed letter, has been answered by councillor Brian Adams, with a long and comprehensive response, and I would appreciate if councillor Adams could confirm that in fact this response has been correctly written into the minutes.
I really, with great respect, I'm not really able to allow that question at this particular stage. I mean, if you're satisfied that the minutes are correct as they stand as an accuracy, I will invite outsiders meeting councillor Adams to come back to you, but not as a record for what's going on at this meeting, so I hope that will satisfy you, because you are stepping outside the procedure rules, I'm afraid. But I will ask councillor Adams outside this meeting to come back to you. It won't be recorded as a comment on the minutes, but hopefully that will satisfy you. So, with that apart, would you kindly, if you know further comments, would you kindly resume your seat, and I'll then ask members to either confirm or otherwise the minutes as they stand? Thank you.
Mr Mayor, we'll do that.
Thank you, thank you. Members, are these minutes with, agreed? May I, announcements, I have a few, and I will try and keep them brief. Reverend Sally Davis, who, some of you, those of you who attended the April meeting, were aware took part in Mervyn Roberts's carefully structured training programme, will be, has kindly agreed to be my chaplain, and she will lead my civic service, which will be held on Saturday the 4th of July in Christchurch Shamley Green at three o'clock in the afternoon. And it'll be followed by tea in the Old Vicarage Garden, hopefully weather permitting, which is alongside the church, and those who know our area might be interested to know that Jane Hoy has already kindly agreed to do the tea, so maybe that, the services are not going to encourage you, Jane Hoy's tea perhaps will. Charities, I'm proposing to support two charities in my year. The first one is Dan's Funds for Burns, and that relates to a family in Shamley Green whose daughter unfortunately got caught up in the Bali bombing in 2002. She had been married just five weeks, she lost her husband, she lost her best friend and bridesmaid, and out of a party of ten people, her party of ten people, she was the only survivor. She was herself suffered over 40% burns to her back and arms, but fortunately she was, managed to get out of the building and was picked up by the Australian Air Force and taken to Sydney. In memory of her late husband, the families have set up a charity, Dan being her late husband, looking, particularly focusing on the treatment, disfigurement treatment, of which very often occurs after burn, treatment, burns have been treated. And my wife hosted one of the first fundraising events for this charity in our, on our grounds in 2003, and my wife's been involved with this charity ever since, so I think it's something I feel we should be supporting. The other charity I wish to support is the Surrey Hills Trust Fund. As councillor Goodwin's kindly mentioned in his proposing me, I have been Waverley's representative on the board of the Surrey Hill A&amp;O B Board since 2007, and I'm currently vice chairman of that board. Last year, they established a trust fund under the auspices of the Community Foundation for Surrey, to allow donors to make donations on a charitable basis for the, the support, enhancement and protection of the Green Belt and the, and the Surrey Hills A&amp;O B, which you all know covers a major part of our borough, so I think is another worthwhile cause. And indeed, over the last nine months, I've been active with officers, Matt Lang's group, looking at a particular project for a particular donor, who, who signed, particularly opening up and enhancing a viewing spot on the escarpment over the eastern end of the borough. And these concepts have been presented to the potential sponsor who has agreed to fund them, and hopefully I'll be able, shortly I'll be able to announce details of the sponsorship and a very significant donation into the fund. There'll be various events throughout the year, we're already talking with the Dan's Fund about a possible Christmas ball at Charterhouse later, just before Christmas, and I intend to organise a sponsored walk along the Greensand Way, which you know runs from the west of the borough right through from Hazelmeir to Ewhurst in the east, it goes on throughout Surrey and right into Kent, but I only intend we should sponsor a walk through Waverley itself, and I hope many of you will come to join me in that. The eye concept will be to break it up into four, three or four sections over a couple of weekends in the autumn, and I've looked forward to giving you as many more detail in due course, and I look for as many of you as possible will come along and support that particular event. In terms of major events, most of you will realise that next month is the 800th anniversary of the signing of the Magna Carta, and I'm, my wife and as mayors myself are being honoured to represent Waverley at that very auspicious national occasion, so I'm looking forward to that. I will also be introducing a mayor's newsletter to try and keep you up to date between council meetings, and I look, as I said earlier on in my acceptance speech, look forward to working closely with you councillors and with officers in promoting Waverley throughout my year. New members, we'll see new male members, I have to say, we'll see in front of them a tie, which some of them are now, I see, have adorned, adorned, and you'll see, you may well wear that if you so wish at council meetings. Unfortunately, we don't seem to have anything for the lady members, and I think it's very remiss of us, I know, but I will sort it out, there's nothing on the table at the moment, and that's something I'll have to say to, I was, I recognise I've been remiss in that event, and I will correct it, I'm sure, by the time of the next council meeting, so do bear forgiveness for that at the moment. Moving on then to the next agenda item, which is election of leader, can I call for nominations of the leader for the 2015-19 period, please? Can I call for nominations of the leader for the 2015/19 period, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. May I congratulate you on your appointment as mayor? And I hope that you and Val have a truly wonderful year. Following a historic third win and the securing of another modest majority, it gives me the greatest of pleasure to nominate councillor Robert Knowles as leader of the fine borough of Waverley.
Do you have a seconder?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, and congratulations also. I'm happy to second.
Are there any other nominations? If not, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. All upon the leader councillor Robert Knowles to introduce the next item on the agenda.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Perhaps you'll indulge me with just a few words on the election as leader before I go into that. And may I congratulate you on your election as mayor? And also thank councillor Liz Wheatley for all the hard work she put in during her year as mayor. I'm delighted to be re-elected as leader of Waverley Borough Council, and I will continue to put the needs of our residents first. There will be challenges ahead. An aging population, managing the external pressures for housing development and dealing with reductions in local government funding, whilst at the same time ensuring the council continues to provide the best possible service for our residents. As councillor Reynolds just said, this is the third consecutive term for the Conservative administration, unprecedented in the history of Waverley. And I thank loyal colleagues for their support in achieving this. Over the last four years, the Conservative administration have responded positively to reductions in spending and made over £4.2 million in savings so services could be protected and council tax frozen. We have a good team of councillors and officers at Waverley, and I'm confident that together we will find ways to meet the challenges we may face with resolve and in the best interest of our residents. And with regard to item 10, on the papers circulated, you will find agenda item 10, which lists my executive for the forthcoming year and also lists councillor Julia Potts as deputy leader of the council.
Thank you. I've had no notice of anybody else wishing to speak on this particular item, so there is just one recommendation. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Appointments to committees, again, leader.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Members, I draw your attention to pages nine to 11 of the agenda. These show the allocations for committees set out under the Local Government and Housing Act 1989 and the Local Government Committees and Political Groups Regulations 1990. May I ask you to correct a typographical error on page 11? Western planning, the Conservative allocation is 10 seats, not 12. If you add the number up, it exceeds, if you leave it at 12, that is an error. Positions have been allocated in accordance with the regulations, except for one additional position for the opposition leader on standards. I also confirm the terms of reference for committees remain unchanged. There are two recommendations, and I commend them to council. But remind council that only licensing committee members may vote on the second recommendation. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, leader. As the leader said, there are two recommendations. The first recommendation, is that agreed?
Agreed.
The second recommendation, can that be agreed by members of the licensing committee only?
Agreed.
Thank you. Waverley appointments, to agree the following appointments. I've been notified that the Historic Environment Champion will be councillor Holder, Design Champion will be councillor David Als, and Community Covenant Champion councillor Maurice Byham. Are those also agreed?
Agreed.
Nomination to Surrey Leaders Group Outside Bodies, Mr Taylor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Bolton is nominated for the Surrey Pension Fund Board, councillor Rowan nominated for the Active Surrey Sports Partnership Board, and councillor Byham nominated for the Surrey Civilian Military Partnership Board.
Thank you. That concludes the agenda for this evening's meeting. So I now declare the meeting closed. And I would invite my guests to join. Sorry. Oh, okay. Are those appointments agreed?
Agreed.
Right. I'm too much of a hurry to get downstairs. We'll try again. The meeting is now closed. May I please invite my guests to join me in the borough hall downstairs and my fellow councillors to follow in due course? Thank you.
Please rise whilst the mayor leaves the chamber.